This will call to order this meeting from Monday, April 13th, 5:30 PM here. Carl, give me a roll call, please.
Councilmember Remley, present. Ronain?
Present.
Lunsman?
Present.
Reif?
Present.
Johnson?
Here.
Bunsonus?
Present.
Olson?
Present.
Rux?
Here.
Mayor Shawman?
Here, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. First, I'll ask for a motion to approve last week's minutes for the meetings of April 16th, sixth, and emergency meeting on the seventh. Can I get such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, before the second, motion and second, I would like to request that there be an amendment to the special meeting minutes at the new business section, discussion of resolution number 20-04-02R, that at the end, there be this sentence included, ordinance number 20-03-02 is repealed on April 8, 2020.
Sounds good. Carl, have you got all that? Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'll take a motion with the amended language as presented by Mr. Wager.
So moved with the amended language by our city attorney.
Second.
Got a motion from Rux and a second from Lunsman. Carl, give me a roll call, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. No one is here to speak at our open forum sections. We'll move along to old business discussion and possible second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 24, or 200405, known as COVID-19 Emergency Ordinance Number Three, possible second reading and final adoption. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Rux and a second from Remley. Does anyone have any points to bring up before we take a reading on the second?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, I would like to propose an amendment to the recitals portion, consistent with the changes last week to ordinance number two. Those amendments would include inserting the recital paragraph, I'm sorry, I'm going to read this for purposes of the minutes, inserting the recital paragraph, quote, whereas Governor Noem on April 6, 2020, noting her authority under the constitutional laws of the state, including STCL Chapter 34-48A, and recent projections of the potential demand upon hospitals due to the spread of the novel coronavirus in South Dakota, issued Executive Order 2020-12, which order rescinded the directives of Executive Order 2020-08, and mandated that the prescribed social distancing and CDC hygiene practices shall be followed by every South Dakotan, all employers, any enclosed retail business that promotes social gatherings, all healthcare organizations, and all local and municipal governments, and, unquote, before the last recital paragraph, and that after, quote, "a state of emergency" in the seventh recital paragraph, inserting, quote, "in all counties in the," unquote, and inserting the recital paragraph, quote, "whereas Governor Noem on April 2, 2020 issued Executive Order 2020-11 declaring a disaster to exist in all 66 counties and nine travel reservations of South Dakota, and that federal resources are needed to alleviate the impacts of the pandemic on the state of South Dakota," and, unquote, after the seventh recital paragraph, I would request that those additional amendments be made to the recitals. This would not be substantial change altering the substance of the ordinance.
Thank you. Ron, can I get a motion to make that amendment to the recitals?
So moved.
Got a motion from Rux and a second from Lunsman. Does anyone have any questions as it relates to those recitals? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote for the amendment.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Does anyone have any points to make about the ordinance itself before we take a final reading on the second, second final reading?
Yes, sir, Mayor Ronain.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, sir. You know, I was wading through this again this morning, and I was just wondering if it seemed appropriate to the council that we remove from this proposed ordinance all of the emergency language. The effect of having this be an emergency ordinance, of course, allows its enactment quickly, but we don't need that right now. We have one in place that is, you know, virtually the same as this one, but if we remove the emergency language, we don't have this ordinance expiring after 60 days, and if we think that some portion of this might still be in effect in 60 days, perhaps it would be prudent of us to table this, let the city attorney work on it, bring it back as a non-emergency ordinance, and if everything goes away in 30 days, we can, by not passing a resolution, repeal the whole thing, but I think it makes it more flexible, it means that we wouldn't necessarily need to do another emergency ordinance in 60 days if it proves necessary.
I, for one, disagree with that sentiment. I think the beauty of this thing is the fact that it has that temporary built-in sunset to prevent us from indefinitely creating things that ban businesses, so, any other discussion?
Well, and I think, you know, there is some discussion to what Rob Ronain has. The reason I think that we brought this ordinance forward was to add language that allows us to make changes to the ordinance quickly, so by not approving this, it would take away our ability by resolution to maybe ease some restrictions, and I like that language in this one. By not doing it now, as an emergency ordinance, that language wouldn't move forward to where then we are basically stuck with the ordinance we have in effect now, which doesn't allow us to make changes by resolution to ease restrictions should, at some point, we need to. While I think that, I agree with Rob that this may be a longer-term process, by not passing it, this version as an emergency ordinance, it actually hamstrings us just a little bit in not being able to react quickly, but I do think that there should be, that there could be some warrant and discussion of removing the emergency language. I don't know if that's another ordinance that is brought forward, but I think the reason for bringing this ordinance was to give us the ability to respond quickly.
I would like to hear what Ron has to say about this.
Yeah, Mr. Wager.
Thank you. Councilmembers, the premise and the foundation of ordinances one, two, and now three has been the public health emergency declared by the president and by the governor, and so the actions of the council in ordering closures and other prohibitions is based upon the necessity and the expediency required of a public health emergency. I think you would be opening the ability of the citizens to question the emergency portion if we're removing from it the language that establishes the public health emergency and therefore provides this council with the public necessity justification for a lot of its actions, and so, I'm not saying that it can't be done and that that language can't be removed, but I would, but I would question then, the, how it would hold up in a court of law if we had removed that kind of language and at the same time we took some, you know, difficult and, to some draconian measures to try to put in place a social distancing. So, at this time, I would tell you that I don't know that I would agree that you should remove that language and certainly would need additional time to satisfy myself and provide the council information and my research on whether we could justify the public health emergency and at the same time pull that language out of the ordinance.
Thank you, Ron. Councilman Lunsman?
I think I agree so far with this, is, this is an emergency, I think we need to keep that 60 days out if we see something, when we get closer to that 60 days, then we can do something at that time. I just don't see that this, this is the time for us to make it look like we're going to go beyond 60 days. I think the fact that we're looking at it emergency and keep it at that 60 days is more comfortable for me, and I think it's more comfortable for the citizens.
And I'm fine with that. I appreciate the council hearing me out on this. Yeah, I'm not, this is not a hill on which I'm intending to die.
Like you say, the one reason for bringing this forward for me was to, like Dave Lunsman in the previous meetings has stated, you know, we need to be able to react to this and be able to ease restrictions as things improve. If they don't improve, we can keep things in place, but if things do improve, and this also may be cyclical too, where we may have, this ordinance may expire, we may have to look at one in the future date if numbers increase due to, you know, reinfections through other, like I say, this could come back in the fall, this could, you know, as, as this might be cyclical, and it's just one of those things where I like the idea of this ordinance number three and the fact that we can ease those restrictions and allow certain things to open while still requiring the social distancing component.
Thank you. Any other discussion before we take the reading on the second, the second reading vote? Otherwise, we've got a motion from Rux and a second from Councilman Remley. Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
He's muted.
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we'll move along to the consent counter. We've got two items, both bids for possible approval. Can I get a motion to approve the consent counter items?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Johnson and a second from Lunsman. Does anyone have any questions as it relates to those items? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got items under the new business category, ordinance 200401, ordinance amending the zoning regulations of the Aberdeen City Code regarding the official zoning map. Possible first reading of this ordinance, Ron, is that a you thing or I have Brett's name on the presented by as well?
Brett can handle that, I'll help.
Mr. Bill, you're up.
In essence, what this ordinance is doing, it is delineating what the official zoning map is, it's stating what we've been doing for years with the map, let me go through here, it, every time the zoning ordinance changes, the map is updated, so it will be updated every time we have an ordinance amendment, and that will be on the city's website. The county's registered deeds office will have a copy of this, and it will be updated once a year, and that's in essence what this ordinance is doing. It's not really changing a whole lot, it's just clarifying.
Can I get a motion for the first reading? We've got a motion from Councilman Ronain, can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Rux. Does anyone have any questions for Brett Bill while he's on the line here with this?
I do. I think this is something that we've had conversations with the county over and wondering if once a year is sufficient.
Well, I guess from my standpoint, it is, since it's currently on the city's website, it's available to the public.
So what, what does it take to, to send this over to them?
Well, depends on how they want it. Normally, they want a large wall map.
Okay.
They would be printing a large wall map out and taping it together.
Okay.
Mr. Wager?
Councilman Bunsonus, Gene, can I have your switch to my screen? Oh, you can't see it anyway, but I can show the current, the present council members that what you're seeing on the screen before you is the official zoning map of the city of Aberdeen. This is what our GIS and the planning and zoning department updates every time they do an annexation. This is just on the city website, under maps, and there's a zoning map feature that they can click on. As you would drill down into this map, you would see the level of detail that is provided. What we're doing with the ordinance change here is we're making, this is essentially a contemporaneous map that will always be current based upon the latest annexation. This is the official zoning map of the city of Aberdeen, and this is what is available not only to the city but obviously to the county officials as well. The county officials would get, basically, once a year would get the opportunity to have a printed map that they can put on their, on their wall, but they would always have access to the official zoning map, and the purpose of these changes are to incorporate and make what you're seeing, what the citizens would see online as the official zoning map.
So prior, this thing had been updated each year, apparently, as it was indicated as the 2019 official zoning map in this ordinance?
Well, I should, just to be clear, that change was made when we did, when we repealed joint zoning jurisdiction last year. The last time that the statute, that the ordinance itself had been changed was 1969 official zoning map. So, again, practice is that the zoning map is officially updated once a year. We're actually updating it every single time we do an annexation, and so by law, we can, we can delineate a map and provide that to the registered deeds every time we do the annexations, but we just need to make sure that it's understood that annexations always involve an update of the city limits map.
Councilman Bunsonus, does that answer your question?
Well, I guess, in trying to help our relationships with the county, that seemed to be something that would be pretty, pretty minor to do, and if we could do it more often, that would be helpful to them, so, leave it up to the staff to make that determination.
If I could, Councilman Bunsonus, now the county officials will know that the official zoning map that they're seeing on our website is the map, so this will be very helpful to them in the future, now they know that they can rely on that as our official zoning map.
And can I add a point of clarification, too?
Please do.
The county is only concerned with the annexation or the city boundary, they're not concerned with the zoning portion of the map, and the annexations don't happen all that often, I sure wish they happened more so we grew faster, but unfortunately, they're not happening that fast, so for them to get the map once a year, we maybe have three annexations a year, and they do get copies of those annexations, once those go through, those annexations are filed with the registered deeds office.
Thank you, Brett. So I believe that I've gotten a first and a second on that. If anyone has any other questions, otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got ordinance 200402, ordinance amending the zoning regulations of the Aberdeen City Code regarding corner visibility. Brett, you're up again.
What this ordinance does is, again, it's delineating what the corner visibility or the site triangle is, and it's including all zoning districts within that. We've been operating for years this way, and now we're clarifying it with the ordinance. There is a section in here that says, "shall be considered dealing with non-conforming structures." If there's something that's currently within that corner visibility triangle, this ordinance will not make it, so it has to be removed right now. Once there's a change with that structure, or that structure is manipulated in some way, that's when the ordinance will take effect for that specific structure.
So Brett, how does it work now?
Right now, it's mostly, it's residential districts, you can't have anything within that 35-foot corner visibility triangle. We're trying to expand it to other areas where we've had problems.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion from Olson and a second from Rux. Does anyone have any other questions for Brett about the site triangle?
So Brett, this is basically, in residential, it's alleys, it, is that the tip, what's that?
Street intersections.
Intersections?
Yep.
What's the, what's the biggest, of course, evergreen trees or trees that are growing out by the intersection? We've had those issues in the past.
Snow piles.
Snow piles, bushes, okay.
Fences.
Fences. I remember watching a video with Mike Olson, I think, regarding this issue.
Councilman Lunsman had a question for you, Brett?
Real quick question, you said that this, this will come up if there's something altered, say the fence, is that triggered by the building permit, or is that triggered by any alteration? Or how does that work with, say, a fence?
With the fence, it'd be a building permit, with a structure, it'd be a building permit?
Okay, thank you.
Brett, about how many, so, this would, like in the high-density commercial zones, for instance, are there a number of buildings that are too close to intersections?
Well, this wouldn't take effect in the downtown area because every building is up to the property line, so the downtown is not affected by this.
But how about in like, on Sixth Avenue, are there, about how many structures would you say fall under the?
Well, I, I, actually, it wouldn't be structures that'd be an issue, it'd be vehicles, things that are displayed within that corner visibility triangle.
So like, for instance, where Caribou Coffee is, they've got a sign right on the corner, that would be a non-compliant structure because it's within 35 feet of the corner?
That's correct.
And how often does this come up, or it's just a point of contention with the department?
It comes up often, especially in the winter time.
Brett, I'm curious, about how many commercial establishments right now would you consider to be violating this ordinance with the updated text?
I could give you a guess, but wouldn't be an honest answer, so I guess I won't give you an answer.
Give us a range, could you do that, maybe?
20%, maybe.
And all those are not structures, but primarily, maybe, they pile snow in the right-of-way this?
Snow in the right-of-way, vehicles that are parked within that corner visibility triangle, merchandise that's stored within that triangle.
Because if a, and just correct me, if a building has a special exception to be within where it's currently located, that would not apply to this ordinance, right?
That is correct. If the board of zoning adjustment already gave them permission, then that structure will remain, but there again, it won't be, have to be removed until they decide they need to pull a building permit or make a change to the structure itself.
Back to that Caribou Coffee example, that sign is in violation of this, if they did a remodel on that facility itself, like say that cell phone store moves and is replaced by another commercial tenant, would that sign need to go? Because that sign wouldn't have gotten a variance as it was currently, right?
That sign has a variance because when Sixth Avenue was widened, a lot of those signs along there were given variances.
Okay. Any other questions that anyone might have for Brett? I didn't get a motion for this one, so I'll take a motion for the first, right? Motion and the second.
Yep.
I apologize for that, we've got a motion and a second. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got discussion, possible first reading and passage of resolution 200403R, extending ordinance 200304, also known as COVID-19 Emergency Ordinance Number Two, and like the last one we had done on emergency meeting on Tuesday, I think it would be prudent to let this thing just expire out since we've got a new one to replace it. Ron, do we need to do anything special with that?
No, again, Mr. Mayor, if the council takes no action, then that would, that would repeal emergency ordinance number two as of tomorrow, but of course, number three goes into effect tomorrow, so there will be no, no lapse. I would also ask, then, that the minutes reflect, if there is no action, that ordinance number 20-0304 is repealed on April 14, 2020.
You mean 200404?
Did I say 200404?
You said 2003.
It's 20, it's 200403.
Oh, 2003, oh, never mind.
No, 200304 is ordinance number two, and that would be the one that's repealed.
You're right.
If no action is taken, it would be repealed effective tomorrow.
Sounds good. So if there's no action to be taken, we'll move along to item number, letter D, the 2020 budgeted transfers, possible approval to authorize finance office to perform the 2020 budgeted transfers between funds as needed and provided for in ordinance 190902, the 2020 annual appropriations. Carl, tell us about that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a standard housekeeping item. During the 2020 budget process, we approved moving funds between different funds, moving money between different funds, excuse me, clarify, and those are in the appropriation, but we do need council approval to actually make those fund changes.
Thank you, Carl, can I get a motion?
Move to approve these transfers.
Second.
Got a motion from Johnson and a second from Lunsman. Does anyone have any questions for Carl while it's on the screen? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got requests from the police department to surplus an automated external defibrillator for donation to the Elks Club of Aberdeen, possible approval to surplus that automated external defibrillator, and police chief Dave, to tell us about that. We've heard similar stories from other defibrillators, so I guess we can just take a motion on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Remley, and who was the second?
Reif.
And a second from Councilman Reif. Does anyone have any discussion on this defibrillator? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got.
Just a question, chief, how many more do you have left after this one?
We do have several left, I don't have the exact number at this time, but we still have a few left to give.
Okay.
Sorry, Dave, I didn't see you on the screen there.
That's okay.
Saved you a little bit of talking.
Thank you.
You to go. Next, we've got request to lease a 2020 Chevy Camaro to be used by the police department for the dare and other programs, possible approval to enter the lease with Steven Lust Automotive for the use of the Camaro as police dare vehicle and other programs. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Remley and a second from Rux. Dave, tell us about this Camaro.
As in the past, we've been fortunate that businesses have invested in the city and the department by giving us a vehicle to be able to use for community policing projects, for recruiting purposes, for just different things that are related to our educational program, so again, we're fortunate in the aspect that Steven Lust would like to offer us a $0 lease for this vehicle to be used, at least for several years, and then maybe ultimately donated to the department, so we're asking for permission to be able to utilize that relationship and use this vehicle. vehicle for community policing and our dare program purposes.
Move to approve.
We already have one.
Oh, got ahead of us there. So we've got a motion from Remley and a second from Rux. Carl, give me a roll call vote. Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronin?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman? Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got bid recommendation for Mill and Overlay Improvement Project. Possible approval to award the bid to Jensen Rock and Sand at the amount of $694,464.49 to authorize the city manager and finance officer to sign all necessary documents after approval by the city attorney, Robin. Tell us about that.
Okay, there were two bids for the project, same normal bidders that we've had the past few years. Jensen Rock and Sand was low. Our prices came in very attractive, of course. Petroleum prices are plenty low right now, and it's reflected in this particular bid. So we're thankful for that. The areas that we're looking at doing, South First Avenue between Lincoln and Klein, Fourth Avenue between Second Street and Washington, South Lawson, south of 12th Avenue, and perhaps Third Avenue going up Dakota Street. Ask for your approval.
Moved. Second.
A motion from Johnson and a second from Remley. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the Mill and Overlay project in this bid? Carl, give me a roll call, please. Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronin?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman? Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got amendment number one to the AIP Grant Agreement, 3460001040, 19 Mill and Overlay Taxiway C Connectors and Realign Taxiway Connector C2. Possible approval and authorization for the city manager to sign the amendment number one to the grant agreement with the FAA increasing the amount from $3,329,000 to $4,329,000. Rich, are you with us?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so yeah, this is a grant increase on our Taxiway Charlie project. This was a multi-year. We used fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 funds for this project, so the FAA came through the grant increase of $1 million, and actually, that project just got started today, so we're kind of excited about that.
Thank you, Rich. Can I get a motion to make that amendment to the agreement?
And move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Johnson and a second from Bunsonis. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronin?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman? Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got payment request for work on airport projects. Payment number 20 for Helms &amp; Associates, $24,256.89. Payment 18 Taxiway Seed, Helms &amp; Associates for $6,548.09. Payment number six for the Aviation Apron to Helms &amp; Associates for $12,264.20. Possible approval of these payments and to sign the paperwork. Rich, tell us about those payments, please.
These are continuing payments for the projects that we've got going on. The master plan layout plan is coming along smoothly. We're just beginning chapter four, so the first three chapters are the ones that take the most time. So that's on the master plan layout plan. Taxiway Charlie is for some additional staking that occurred over the past few weeks, and then the Aviation Apron and geometry changes. This is mostly for some additional CAD work that has been done by Craig over at Helms.
Move to approve all three payments.
Second.
Got a motion from Johnson and a second from Rux. If no one has any questions for Mr. Crople, Carl, give me a roll call vote. Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronin?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman? Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the approval of bill list for April 13, 2020 is included in the packet. There's been no additions to that. Can I get a motion to approve those bills?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Lunsman and a second from Bunsonis. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronin?
Epstein.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronin, excuse me, Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman? Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got payroll approval for the pay period, March 29 through April 11, 2020, and for the city's share of social security, old age, and survivors insurance, retirement, health, and life insurance. Can I get a motion, please?
Move.
All right, so I've got a motion from Remley and a second from several others online. I'm going to assume, Councilman Ronin will just say. Carl, can I get a roll call to make the payroll, please? Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronin?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman? Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the city manager's report. Lynn, what have you got for us tonight?
Thank you, Mayor Shawman. I only have one item this evening, and the city engineer, public works director, Robin Bobzine, would like to talk about recycling changes.
Based on a conversation today, Dependable Sanitation is concerned about doing some of the recycling, and they would like to suspend the recycling services for the next month or so. I have been in contact with our finance officer to see what we can do to remove that from our bill for the next month or so, and I think he has a way to get that done so people will not be billed for the work that they aren't receiving. So what we'd be asking the public to do at this point is to just put their recycling in with their normal garbage, or they can store it for the next month if they choose to, but we would pick it up with the normal trash if they set it out.
So kind of, Robin, Dependable Sanitation right now for recycling efforts does that manually, where they do the separation, so they're touching the commodity on a regular basis?
That's correct.
When would this take effect?
It would take effect next Monday, so Monday, the 20th.
Thank you, Robin. Anything else, Lynn?
No, thank you.
And I will call for a special meeting on April 20, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. to select the finalists for the city manager position. I believe most of you, if not all of you, have received an email with the candidate information, and that will lead a Zoom call, as is the trend these days.
Five of us will still have to be here, though, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So anything else before we move, oh, Mr. Wager?
Mr. Mayor, I did provide the council members earlier today a form of an emergency solutions grants program application that is part of the CARES Act funding, and I informed the council that you had been asked by a local nonprofit to sign a certification approving their application, and the nonprofit was under a deadline and needed to submit the application by Friday, April 17. What I'm asking the council to do tonight is to, even though it's not on the agenda, nevertheless, as an emergency measure, approve authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign not only this application, but similar applications during this week for those nonprofits that are needing to get this program application funding. And then next Monday, I can put on a formal motion, an agenda item, to approve and ratify these certifications, but I think it would be, in light of the emergency setting that we're in, to authorize you and, I should say, you or the city manager to be able to sign these certifications so that we're not holding up grant applications during this week.
Thank you, Ron. Is everyone on board with that?
Do you need a form of motion? Move to allow the mayor and city manager to find, to sign grant applications as necessary.
Let's make it clear, mayor or city manager.
Mayor or city manager.
Second. So I've got a motion from Rux and a second from Remley. Carl, give me a roll call on that, please. Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronin?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman? Aye. Motion does carry. Anything else before we move to adjourn here for the evening? Councilmember Remley?
Yes, I have a prepared statement I'd like to read. Several council meetings ago, I made a statement that, once this COVID-19 pandemic is over, this council needs to rethink how it gets paid. I regret using those words, as now I know my statements, my statement made me sound like potentially looking for a raise in council pay. I was not looking for a raise then, nor am I looking for a raise now. My comments come from frustrations with our federal government and our state government continually kicking the responsibility of keeping citizens safe from COVID-19 down to the next level.